Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Rancher Mirage City Council meeting for Thursday, November 1st. November 1st here already, can you believe that? Just this year has gone by so quick. Council also serves as a library and observatory board, a housing authority, and the city council representing the redevelopment successor agency. It's 1:00 in Rancher Mirage, so let's begin. If you would please stand for the flag salute led by Kristi Ramos, our city clerk.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Isaiah, I thought you were going to leave the room or something.
Yeah, I was trying not to block the flag.
Kristi, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Hobart.
Here.
Councilmember Townsend.
Here.
Councilmember Weil.
Here.
Mayor Protam Smotrich.
And Mayor Kite.
Here, thank you. And if you would all please stand for a moment of silence to express our city's sympathy for the victims of Saturday shooting at the Tree of Life congregation in Pittsburgh. Over the last few weeks, we've had a number of new staff members here come to work at the city of Rancher Mirage. We'd like to use this opportunity to introduce them to you, and so I'll ask our city manager, Isaiah, if you would like to introduce the members from the library, and then we can have the other staff introduced by the directors.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so we have six new staff members to introduce to you today, and they're from three different departments within the city. So first, I'll start with the new library employees. So TJ Hicks, go ahead and stand up, TJ. TJ came from the Children's Discovery Museum, and TJ is our program coordinator. So he's responsible for coordinating the over 300 programs a year that our library does, so he is a very busy man. Welcome, TJ. The next new employee at our library is Tyler Fokes. Tyler is the administrative analyst, and he was actually an intern with the city of Rancher Mirage before he earned this full-time position. So as the administrative analyst, Tyler will be the liaison to the various boards, commissions, and nonprofit boards at the library, and he'll also directly support the library director and the library operations manager. Welcome, Tyler. Jeremy, would you like to introduce your new employees?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hagerman. Pleased to announce the addition of three new employees to the development services team: Benjamin Torres, Michael Stitt, and Jason Mahia. If you guys would all please stand up. From left to right, Benjamin Torres is our new associate planner. He started yesterday, in fact, so this is just his second day on the job. Ben double majored in economics and urban studies at the University of California, Irvine, and he's currently in pursuit of a master's degree in public administration. He's been a planner in the valley for the last few years. He's worked for the Aua Caliente Band of Cuyahoga Indians, and most recently, he was a planner for the city of Desert Hot Springs. Moving to the right is Jason Mahia. Jason is a state-certified electrician. He served 12 years in the military, six in the Marine Corps, and six in the Army National Guard. He has a master's degree in business administration and brings a wealth of knowledge in the electrician, electrical field, so we're happy to have him. And lastly, we have Michael Stitt, also a building inspector, too. Michael is a licensed plumber who's owned his own plumbing business since 2002. Both of the inspectors, very comfortable around job sites, and really just very pleased to have them. The wealth of knowledge that they're going to bring from their respective fields is going to be a great asset to the city, so thank you, gentlemen.
We have a new employee in the public works department as well. Trent Moyle, if you'd like to stand up. Trent has been in the valley locally for 10 years with his wife and two kids. Trent brings over 20 years of experience in the electrical business when he came to the city. Kind of a funny story, the second day of work, we're here with Trent, we go to a conference out of town on our way back into town after hours, and one of our signals is in red flash. So we said, "Well, we're going to work overtime on your second day of work, Trent," and he got to see an Edison vault explode, and he got to stay till 8:00 at night on his second day of work. So we said, "Welcome to Public Works. That's the type of service we're going to provide and continue to provide, so you might as well get broken in on your first or second day." So thank you, we look forward to what's to come with the Signal Sync project. Appreciate you, Trent.
Okay, is that it? Okay. Well, welcome to the city of Rancher Mirage. We certainly will look forward to working with all of you guys. It's a great place to put in your years of work, and the city of Rancher Mirage will certainly benefit from having you all working with us. Congratulations, and look forward to working with you in the future. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to non-agenda public comments. And for those of you who are here to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, if you would fill out one of these yellow forms and pass them on to the city clerk, and then we can call on you to speak. We would hope that it would be only three minutes, and if you would give your name and your address. So we'll start with Lucky Calendar.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for having me. My name is Lucky Calendar, and I recently purchased Babe's Barbecue and Brew House from my family's trust this last summer. I signed a five-year lease with the river right here in Rancher Mirage. And just a little brief history about me, I actually grew up in Indian Wells. I attended Marywood Country Day School and Sacred Heart. When my dad passed away in 2009, I moved out of the valley, and now I'm here back again. I'm passionate about the restaurant business and the service industry. Some of the things that motivated me to purchase this restaurant was that I remembered a lot of moments in the restaurant with my dad growing up as a child, and he would show me a lot of really interesting things on how to cook and how to use all the equipment and how to bake, and I'm just very proud to be in Rancher Mirage representing this restaurant. Over the last few months, we've completely refurbished the restaurant. We've released new menus, new cocktail menus, new food menus. We're looking at expansion of the brewery, and we're investing into the brand to hopefully open up a new taproom in Palm Springs. We actually have been brewing all our beers onsite at the river for the last 16 years. We're the oldest microbrewery in the entire Coachella Valley. I've brought on a new marketing team. I'm working with Steve Rinn and Joe Enos, my publicist, and I'm proud to announce that we will be the official beer sponsor of the Palm Springs International Film Festival this year. Last year, it was Stella Ortois. And again, thank you very much for having me, and I look forward to advancing the brand and prosperity in Rancher Mirage, and looking forward to seeing you all at the restaurant. So thank you very much for having me.
Lucky, thanks for being here today. What's your favorite brew?
I personally like the new grapefruit hazy IPA we just came out with. It's very good.
Okay, we'll have to get over and try it.
Yes, please do. I look forward to welcoming you all at the restaurant. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Dr. Joan Rubain.
Good afternoon, Mayor Kite and members of the city council. I'm Dr. Joan Rubain, president of International Classical Concerts of the Desert at the library and observatory. And first, I want to thank you all for your invitation, along with the then-director, Tom Johnson, 12 years ago, to come to the library to play. And he used to say to me, Mr. Johnson used to say to me, "If anybody can do it, you can do it." So here we are, 12 years later, and I have some wonderful things to report to you. So let me begin with numbers. We have five concerts each season with an average attendance of 325 people, adding up to 1,725 people per year, and times 12 years, that's almost 20,000 patrons who come to the concerts. Then there's our outreach programs to schools and senior centers. A few years ago, we received the Shiny Apple Award from the school district for promoting and providing complimentary tickets to children for our programs. We continue to do this through Louisa Castradale, the person in charge of school programs. Our artists also perform at most of our senior centers throughout the valley, and for those who can come, we provide complimentary tickets. As far as our artists, we present gold medal winners for most of the major competitions, including the Van Cliburn competition, the Tchaikovsky competition in Russia, and then Indianapolis violin competition, just to name a few. Additionally, our artists have won Grammys, as well as life achievement awards from Lincoln Center, for example, the Juilliard String Quartet and the great cellist Lynn Harrell, just to name a few. And for the next year, we have engaged other great pianist John Eve Thibodeau for a return performance. If you recall, he was engaged by the city, by our city here, to perform for the new Rancher Mirage Bowl that we opened a couple of years ago. And then also violinist Augustin Hadlik will come right after his appearance with the New York Philharmonic. We are all volunteers, and because of that and what we do, we have received an award from the Philanthropic Society of the Valley, and have also been honored by other well-known organizations for our community involvement and contribution. We have the support of the ON Foundation from Mrs. Annenberg from other cities, for instance, Indian Wells, La Quinta, and Palm Desert. So again, we wish to thank you for this opportunity to address the council, and we are looking forward to another 13 years. Thank you all very much.
Thanks for coming today. Okay, the next speaker, Susan Rice from Palm Valley School.
Good afternoon, thank you. I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce myself and talk to you about some events that are coming up at Palm Valley School, right here in your backyard. I'm a new resident of Rancher Mirage. I've been in the valley for four years, but my husband and I recently purchased a home near the school, so we're very happy with our time in Rancher Mirage. So we have a couple of things coming up that are very exciting. We have an open house event on our campus on November 6th at 5:00 PM where families can come, or any members of the public can come and learn more about our school and the things that we do. We've been in existence in the valley for 65 years. This is our 66th year of operation. I recently just heard the gentleman, Lucky Calendar, who was a former Marywood Country Day student. As you know, the history of the school is that we're the result of a merger of two schools that have been in the valley for some time. The other event that we have coming up is a Wine Night fundraiser that's actually going to be held on our campus this year on Friday, the 9th at 6:00 PM on our lower school campus. And events like that help us to raise funds for students to attend our school. You may not know that we give almost $1 million every year to students who qualify for financial aid so that they can attend our school and experience the college preparatory independent school education that we offer. And then last but not least, I wanted to invite each of you to attend our Veterans Day Assembly. We're one of the only schools in the valley that stays open on the observed Veterans Day so that we can honor our servicemen and women here in the valley. We have a lot of people from the community, parents, grandparents, and also just general community members that come and attend that so that we can show the students what it means to serve our country and how important that is to us. We have two speakers that day, one of which is a teacher, our third-grade teacher, Jen Withrow, who is a former servicewoman in the Air Force who works as a teacher now at our school, and one of our dads, who's an active Marine, who's going to come and speak to the kids about what service means to them. So I would encourage all of you, if you have the opportunity, and you're welcome to visit us anytime, but that Veterans Day Assembly will take place on Monday, November 12th at 8:30 AM in our gymnasium where we'll honor our servicemen and women. So thank you so much. It's lovely to meet you. I know several of you have come to our events in the past. Iris, I remember meeting you last year at our Peace Pole event, and I know I've seen many of you around. I look forward to getting to meet more of you.
Susan, how many students does Palm Valley have now?
About 350 overall. We operate now from preschool through grade 12. In the last couple of years, we've expanded our preschool programming in particular, so we actually have students as young as six weeks on our campus. Yeah, we like to call it cradle to college.
And personally, how many of the seniors do you have?
We graduate between 15 and 22 students every year, depending on enrollment, but we do, we love the fact that we have 100% graduation rate and 100% matriculation rate to top colleges. Many of our students go on to earn full-ride merit scholarships at top universities and colleges in the United States. Yeah.
Thanks for being here today.
Thank you so much for having me. Thanks for all the work that you do.
Tell us a little bit about yourself, where you came from before you came to Palm Valley.
Absolutely. I was born and raised in Fairbanks, Alaska, which is a long ways from Palm Springs. Both my husband and I are from there. And most recently, I've bounced around a little bit, but most recently, I spent about the last eight years in San Francisco, California. So I've been a Californian now for a little more than a decade. I've been in the valley for, like I said, this is my fourth year, and I've been a resident of Rancher Mirage for the past year and a half.
Well, welcome to Rancher Mirage.
Thank you, very happy to be here. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on an item that's not currently on the agenda? If you would, would you please come forward?
Good afternoon, city councilman and staff. I'm Wally Melendez, and I just want to welcome the new employees that you hired, and if they can still, if they're still here and they can listen to me, I just want to tell you all that you can find a nicer bunch of people to work for.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak on any item not on the agenda? Okay, we'll go on to the next item then, and that is city council comments, and we'll begin with Councilman Weil.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. For decades, ambassadors Walter and Lenore Annenberg welcomed political and educational business and entertainment leaders to Sunnylands. Today, Sunnylands maintains its position as a gathering place for world leaders to meet on topics of global importance. That particular picture that you're looking at, of course, was received internationally. Concurrently, Sunnylands has established itself as a significant point of interest for visitors, offering a variety of programs and activities, most of which are free of charge. Tai Chi, yoga, garden walks, bird walks, and various family activities are all being offered to the public this season at no cost. There is also a fantastic exhibit currently on display and available for viewing to visitors. Unbeknownst to many, Sunnylands is in the migratory pathway for many species of birds. Titled Flight Plan, this exhibit highlights over 130 different species of birds that have been sighted on the estate. Over the course of two years, a National Geographic photographer was commissioned to capture these magnificent birds on the estate. The result is a spectacular collection of photographs available for viewing. Should one wish to see a bit more of what's behind the famous pink wall, there are several options. Guided historic house tours, estate ground tours, and birding on the estate are all available for a fee. For more information regarding hours of operation and how to purchase tickets, please visit That's www.sunnylands.org. If you have not had an opportunity to visit Sunnyland Center and Gardens, I highly recommend doing so. We're very blessed with having the Annenberg Estate and Sunnylands located in Rancher Mirage. It has been labeled the White House of the West. Indeed, dignitaries, kings, queens, and generals from all over the world have been to the estate over the past number of years. President Obama has frequently visited the estate and, of course, played golf and so forth. So we're quite blessed. This is another example of the frankly distinguished area that we live. We're extremely proud, and we're fortunate to have Sunnylands as one of our feature attractions. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. And Councilwoman Iris Smotrich.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. This is just a quick reminder that tickets for the 2019 Speaker Series go on sale this coming Monday, November 5th at 6:00 AM. Online is, ordering is extremely easy. You just tap into www.rmspeakerseries.com. Tickets for this series, which includes all three speakers, Henry Winkler, Dr. Drew Pinsky, and Elizabeth Vargas, are just $120 for general seating and $150 for preferred seating, and a VIP speaker reception is available for an additional cost of $100. The reception includes a meet and greet and photo opportunity with the speaker, lots of good food and beverages, including wine, and all are catered by Aqua California Bistro, and we also have some music provided by the lovely harpist Lynn Lockwood. So we're looking forward to a fantastic series with three very special speakers, and we hope to see you there. So get your tickets right away, and we look forward to seeing you at this fun event. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris. Councilman Hobart?
Well, it gives me considerable pleasure to inform you and announce that Charlie Townsend, Charles Townsend, our former mayor, our city council member, got married this past Tuesday to his longtime companion and friend, Robert Neal. And Charlie, we wish you a wonderful marriage and lengthy lives and no children.
Well, he has three, and he's a grandfather, so there are children involved, and I'm very pleased to have him in my life and to share this wonderful moment and this opportunity to be awarded to us in America is just mind-boggling, brilliant in sincerity. It's a great thing for he and I and many others to be able to have this in our lives. And I thank you, and I thank you all for accepting Robert into our lives. You have been all so gracious, as you were with Gordon, too. So more blessed than that, I even said to Robert the other day when we were here at City Hall, isn't it wonderful to be able to walk through these halls and to have people smile and genuinely be there and join the love that you two have with all of you? So thank you, Dana.
Charlie, you want to say who actually married you?
Yes, Mr. Steve Quintanilla, our city attorney and resident reverend in charge, did our wedding along with, I think we've lost count of how many people Steve has married graciously. He held our hands through all the paperwork. In the agony we went through without him, I don't think we would have made it, one day before the deadline of what we had to make to have this happen. Thank you, Steve.
And I didn't even have to load the shotgun.
Thank you, everybody.
Congratulations, Charlie. Would you like to discuss your item for the day?
I certainly will. My item for the day is, the city of Rancher Mirage is proud to announce that we have received a perfect score for the second year in a row of 100 in the Human Rights Campaign 2018 Municipal Equality Index, as you see there. In this index, municipalities are rated on a scale of 0 to 100 based on the city's laws, policies, benefits, and services for the LGBTQ community. Over 506 total municipalities that were rated, only 15% received a perfect score of 100 nationwide. Perfect scores were given to only 12 of the 57 municipalities rated in California, and only two of the Coachella Valley municipalities, Rancher Mirage and Palm Springs, were among them. The rating criteria include evaluations of the following, as you can see: nondiscrimination laws, the city as an employer, municipal services available, law enforcement reporting, leadership on LGBTQ equality. The city of Rancher Mirage is proud of the service and the opportunities offered to our LGBT community, and would like to thank those who has hard work and dedication to equality has led to this perfect rating here in this city. This is a testament to the type of community we are and the value of equality that we represent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Charlie. Just a reminder, the 18th Annual Rancher Mirage Art Affair will be held this Saturday and Sunday, November 3rd and 4th, at the Rancher Mirage Community Park. Come out and enjoy 65 juried artists from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM each day, and jazz performances from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM each day. Better yet, admission is free for both the art show and the jazz performances. So once again, that's tomorrow, or that's not tomorrow, that's Saturday and Sunday at the Rancher Mirage Community Park. Hope to see you there. I'll be there judging the best of show, so come out and see all the artwork. Okay, so much for council comments, and move on to the approval of the minutes from the meeting of October 18.
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the consent calendar, and Isaiah Hagerman, our city manager, will cover those items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, you have five items on your consent calendar today. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two on the consent calendar is the second reading of the Tuft ordinance. Item number three is the approval of a fireworks display for a wedding at Tamaras Country Club. This firework display is scheduled for Saturday, November 17th, 2018, at approximately 8:20 PM on the Tamaras Country Club golf course near the clubhouse, and it is anticipated to last for eight minutes. Attached to the staff report is the approval letter from the Tamaras Country Club Board of Directors, the proof of mailing to the one-mile radius that is required, and all other requirements have been met by the applicant. Item number four is your contracts list. There are two contracts for consideration today. Contract number one is for a new property management company. The city issued an RFP, went through a competitive process, and I'd like to thank the subcommittee, which consisted of Mayor Kite and Councilman Weil, on, Weil, on sitting through the interviews for those and going through each proposal in detail. The second contract is a minor adjustment to a public works contract based on changes to the scope after the contract was finalized, so these were driven by city requests, not by contractors' requests, and this was reviewed by a subcommittee before it landed on this agenda. And item number five are your demands, and we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Isaiah. Are there any questions, comments? Is there anybody in the audience that has a question on any of the consent items? Seeing none, could I please have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number six, which are the reports and informational items. And we're lucky enough today to have our commissioner from the Palm Springs Airport Commission, Bill Reisner. Bill Reisen?
Excuse me.
Reisen. We get it right, you know, while, well.
It's my fault. I started that.
Bill, how are you today?
I'm fine, thank you.
Good. Nice to have you here.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayors, city council members, city staff. Glad to be back to give you an update about what's going on at the airport. First of all, I'd like to thank you again for allowing me to represent you and the City of Rancho Mirage on the Airport Commission for the last few years. I've really enjoyed it, and I hope you get a feeling for what's going on at the airport. First of all, the airline passenger traffic is continuing to increase. We're up over 10% so far this year with airline passengers, and so we'll exceed the 2.2 million passengers by the end of the year. So, in fact, it's kind of interesting, this past July, which is normally the slowest or one of the slowest months of the year, there was a 20% increase over last July in passenger traffic. So I don't know where they're coming from, but they're coming to Coachella Valley. There's been a few more additions on airline routes, a few new ones, Canada, Calgary, and Edmonton, nonstop flights now. Also Newark, Atlanta, and Boston are added flights from Palm Springs. So the airline industry is doing quite well here in our valley. The rideshare ground transportation system, the Uber, Lyft, et cetera, has been in operation at the airport since last March and is running very smoothly, and it's very popular. So I know if you recall, a couple of years ago, we had quite a controversy over that, but it is doing very good. The airport's financial situation, again, is very good. As an example, this last fiscal year, which entered in June, of course, ended with a 6% increase in revenues over the planned budget for last year. So it's doing very well. As for construction projects, things that you and the public will notice in the baggage compartment, the baggage area of the terminal, there's all new carpet. Also upstairs in the Bono concourse, there's new seating being installed either the last couple of weeks or now. So you'll see a new, modern seating upstairs in the Bono concourse. Also, below the Bono concourse downstairs on the, which for years and years has been empty, the construction has been complete on, for airline office space, which will be used because of the expansion of the ticketing wing, where the airline offices were behind the ticketing. And I'll mention that in a minute. Some of the future projects that are coming, first of all, in order to receive federal funding from the FAA, the FAA requires that airports submit annually a five-year airport improvement program. And this new five-year program includes, of course, I mentioned the expansion of the ticketing wing. That's a $26 million project that's been in the works now for a few years. That hopefully will begin next year and be completed by 2020. The City of Palm Springs is going to issue bond to help fund that project. Also, back to the Bono concourse, there are eight boarding bridges, and obviously you've all flown out of Palm Springs. They're getting a little old and tired, so what the city and the airport decided to do is, instead of replacing them, they're going to rebuild and overhaul them, saving several million dollars. So that's what's coming up. On the regional concourse, where the regional airplanes come in, if you've noticed in the last few years, the prop airplanes are all gone, and the jets are coming in, they're getting larger. Even the smaller jets and the medium-sized jet airlines are starting to use the regional concourse. So the plan is to build three new boarding bridges, like at the other terminal. That's might be a few years off, but anyway, it's in the works. The big item that we discussed at the last meeting, and we'll do it again at this coming meeting in quite detail, is the new law, California law, legalizing marijuana. So California law says it's okay to have marijuana, smoke it, but when it comes to airport access, that's a different story. Because even though it's legal in California, once you go through TSA, unless they stop you, get on an airplane and take off, you're in federal territory then. So there's a little controversy there between the state law and the federal law. And the question again is, if you legally have marijuana, you get on an airplane here and you land in a state that it's illegal, what do you do? It's a problem.
Hey, Bill, let me ask you a question. Do they have information posted on the airports and the terminal that people are aware of this?
Not yet. Let me get to that. We, the commission, are trying to come up with some kind of a solution to this and send to the Palm Springs City Council. The Los Angeles International Airport has dealt with this, and they came up with an ordinance to deal with it. And I don't want to go into detail about what their ordinance is, but we're looking at that, the commission is looking at that. We're also trying to get information from the city staff on more information, so we can discuss it and come up with some recommendations to take to the Palm Springs City Council. David Reddy, the city manager in Palm Springs, has been very helpful in supplying us with the information that his staff has -- so it'll be a very interesting meeting next month to see what we find out and whether or not we come up with a solution. It might take another meeting or so to get a recommendation to the city council.
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
You talk about federal jurisdiction. Would it be federal jurisdiction if you got on a plane and left here nonstop to San Francisco and never got in or around other states? Would that still be federal jurisdiction? Or would that be state?
That's a tough question, yes. To answer your question, yes, because the airspace belongs to the federal government. And so when that airplane is in airspace anywhere in the country, it's under federal jurisdiction. So that's kind of a fine point there, and that's why it is very -- Stephen is probably very interested in how this is going to come out legally.
Wow.
Well, yeah, in an airline, obviously, you're in federal airspace. So it's going to be very, very interesting to see what happens. One other thing, the Palm Springs Air Museum, and if you have not been to the air museum, you should, I know Iris has, because I saw her there a couple of times in the past, they're starting their annual seasonal programs. And last, I think it was last week or week before, it was, and every Saturday afternoon at 1 o'clock, they have a program, a speaker who talks about aviation issues, a lot of it is World War II stories and slides, pictures. Very interesting, knowledgeable people. As an example, last week, yeah, last week, the 95-year-old ex-army air corps pilot that flew B-25s, and he, for being 95 years old, he was excellent. He had a program, explained all of his experiences being a B-25 pilot, actually over in China, the Burma, China situation before and during World War II. Anyway, if you might be interested, give it a thought, go to their website, find out what their programs are, and they got, like I said, they have some very, very interesting speakers. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate you being here. Yes, Charlie, you had the question about, was it the, not the marijuana, but?
I was asking about how are they going to inform people of all these regulations? Because people don't know about this.
That's right. People don't know it. That's what I said. Legally, you can get, take marijuana in there, and if you can get by TSA, get on an airplane, and you land someplace where it's illegal, and you get caught, people don't understand that. So this is what the commission is trying to do, to come up with a plan to, an ordinance for the city council to, and then we'll have probably signs at the airport saying, beware, if you have marijuana on it, you may be subject to taking it away from you or whatever. As an example, if, Los Angeles, what they came up with is TSA, being a federal agency, they don't enforce local law, of course, or law of any kind. If they find marijuana in your carry-on or on your person, they, according to the Los Angeles ordinance, all they will do is notify the local law enforcement, and then the local law enforcement will decide what to do. And that, here again, and we talked about this at the commission meeting, what kind of a drain is this going to put on the local police department? If they have to come and respond to everyone that's got marijuana with them? Anyway, these are, it's a complicated--
Very complicated. But, Bill, right now, nobody can take anything away from them. The marijuana away from them?
Not denied. Well, in California, no, it's legal.
Yeah, so no pun intended, you're just letting it fly.
Thank you, Charlie.
Charlie, you didn't need that one.
A test case. Maybe I can be a test case, Bill, see what happens.
No, 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 don't.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
You're doing a great job, and we appreciate it. Okay, we're now moving on to item number seven, which is a public hearing. Resolution number 2018, next in order, calling an election on levying a special tax. And that'll be presented today by Kofi Antobom, the Director of Administrative Services. Kofi?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, members of the council. The item before you this afternoon for consideration is to hold a public hearing on annexation number 177 into the city's community facilities district number one. This process is the second and last step in the city's standard process for all developments within the city's jurisdiction. The first step was considered and approved by the city council at its October 4th meeting. The territory proposed for annexation is located within the Eisenhower Medical Center Campus as part of the Rinker Building and totals approximately 1.27 acres. As detailed in the resolution of intention, which was adopted at the last council meeting, at the October 4th council meeting, the petition filed by the owner allows for a shortening of the time for the special election in order to expedite the annexation process. Therefore, the annexation, the public hearing on the annexation, proposed annexation, and the proposed levying of the special tax may take place at today's meeting. And in the absence of majority protest, the special election on levying the special tax can also take place at today's meeting. At the conclusion of the public hearing, provided majority written protest does not exist, the city council may consider adoption of the resolution on page 7-4 of the agenda packet, calling for an election on levying a special tax, declaring the results, and directing staff to record an amendment to the notice of special tax lien. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions of staff? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, do you have the results of the election?
Yes, Mayor. The ballot for the two eligible votes was received and was in favor. Therefore, votes in favor equal 100% of total votes cast.
Thank you. With that, we'll declare the public hearing closed. And is there anybody else who has a question on this item before we vote? Okay, can we have a motion, please?
Sure, I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor. That the city council adopt resolution number 2018, next in order, calling an election on levying a special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to community facilities district number one, parent annexation number 177 parent, declaring the election results, approving the annexation of the territory, and directing the recordation of the amendment of the notice of special tax lien in connection with approval of major modification, case number MOD 17023. Second.
Thank you, Ted. Thank you, Charlie. Would you please vote?
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to item number eight, which is on the action calendar and its ordinance, next in order, first reading, amending chapter 1.12, enforcement officers designated. And this will be discussed by our city attorney, Steve Quintanilla. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we have before you today is an ordinance that basically is clarifying and declaring existing law. I like to think that this is a housekeeping item, but really, it's like rearranging the furniture. Because it's something that we don't necessarily have to do, but in the future, if this issue comes up in the context of litigation, it will save us a lot of time, effort, and money to get that case dismissed immediately, just based on the fact that we would have an ordinance that says exactly what the law provides. So what has come up in other jurisdictions is that some private entity or a private individual or even a city council candidate would come forward and argue that the city attorney or the city manager or somebody with enforcement authority at the city is not enforcing a particular law that's on the books in the municipal code. It could be something as simple as a law that requires a council member to record something with the city or file something with the city, or that, or to enforce a law that has something to do with somebody cleaning up their landscaping. What's always been a longstanding legal principle in California that cities have the exclusive authority to enforce their own municipal codes. Nobody else, just the city. Nobody else, just the city, and whoever the city council designates as the individual or the position to enforce that particular section of the code. Like, for instance, in your code, we have several provisions in there that specifically provides who or what position enforces, like our fire code, which is the fire department, or our fire chief, or all of our zoning regulations are enforced by our planning department, and our electrical code, and plumbing codes enforced by our building inspectors. So unlike a lot of other cities, we do specifically spell out who has those responsibilities. But in anticipation that this issue may come up here in the valley in connection with the pending lawsuit involving hundreds of short-term rental owners, which do not involve the cities as defendants, I anticipate that this issue may come up, and it may come up in the context of a claim that the city has an obligation to enforce all of its ordinances, and if it doesn't, then a private entity or private citizen can step in and enforce our regulations. Now, the reason why that's not good public policy is, is because, under the current law, which provides the cities with discretionary authority to, to enforce particular code sections, that allows cities to work out alternative solutions, something a lot more friendlier than actually issuing a ticket and prosecuting someone. And that has worked in the past, and that's generally how a lot of our issues are resolved here in the city. So what I am proposing here, in order to fend off any attack on our discretionary authority to enforce our municipal codes, is an ordinance that clearly states, that just basically restates the law, and that is, that nothing in the municipal code shall be interpreted to confer upon or provide a private citizen or private entity with the right to enforce any chapter of the municipal code or any city ordinance. And that unless otherwise specifically provided, the city and its employees, agents, and officials shall be the only authorities permitted to enforce the provisions of the municipal code or any city ordinance. And that since this section is basically a clarification and declaration of existing law, that this ordinance will take effect both retroactively and prospectively. So my recommendation is that city council consider this ordinance and introduce it today.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions from city attorney?
I do.
Question, Charlie?
Yes, Steve, a situation has come up in the last couple of weeks from a few presidents of some of the HOAs, innocent at issue of dogs. How many dogs are permitted? And what has happened is, as it has come to me, people are buying homes in HOAs, and they're coming in with three dogs or four dogs. Some of the HOAs have a ordinance in, in their rules and regulations of only two dogs or one dog. So we have one situation here where they're coming in and saying, you as the HOA cannot hold me to that, because I called the city of Rancho Mirage, and it's three. So the HOAs are coming to me and saying, who's right, who's wrong, and everybody's going to attorney. So could you kind of give a, what you think, if I'm putting you on the spot, what?
Yeah, this issue comes up quite often in a number of different contexts, which includes like short-term rentals. We have HOAs in the community that prohibitly, that prohibit short-term rentals in their community, although the city, well, actually, now, our ordinance compiles with that, with the HOA CCNR, so that's no longer a good example. In any event, with respect to the dog situation, number of dogs, the first line of defense for a homeowner is to have that particular condition or restriction or covenant enforced privately through the process that's set up in that particular HOA. The city's regulations are not going to trump that restriction. So just because we allow more, we may happen to allow more pets than, than are allowed under the applicable CCNRs, it's not going to trump the CCNRs.
So in other words, they do have the authority, the HOA, to say, in here, it's two?
Correct. If that's the restriction, then they have the right, legal right to enforce that from a, in, in, from a private civil, as a private civil matter, not involving the city.
So the city doesn't trump the HOA?
That's correct.
Thank you.
You might comment that the number of dogs that are permitted in the city outside of HOA are three. I know I've got three, you've got three too, I think, don't you, Al?
Take the fifth.
If you have, if you have three dogs, you really have one too many, but sometimes you can't say no.
Okay.
And we, we don't enforce those rules unless somebody reports that to us.
Okay, so somebody coming to the, the city hall and to the, to the counter would be told exactly that. They do have to, to abide by the HOA that they live in, not what the city ordinance is.
Yeah, correct. We would just, we would say that it's, you have to follow your rules that are set forth in your CCNRs, regardless of what our rules provide if it allows for a greater number of pets.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Charlie. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to comment on this item? Question? Okay, seeing none. We'll now move back to the council, and if there are no further questions, can I have a motion, please?
Okay, I will move that the city council introduce ordinance number, next in order, clarifying and declaring existing law regarding private causes of action pertaining to enforcement of city ordinances.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll move on to the last item for the day, and this is the Rancho Mirage Resident Golf Program Agreement, brought to us by the Director of Marketing, Sean Smith.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. In 2002, the city of Rancho Mirage partnered with the Weston Mission Hills to establish a resident golf program. That program provides the opportunity to play the Gary Player and Pete Dye Golf Course at discounted rates with annual discounted membership dues, advanced tee times, and other benefits. And that program has been active ever since. In fact, to date, we have approximately 936 members, I believe. The most recent agreement that that program has fell under, unfortunately, has expired. Although the Weston continues to operate the program, under the terms of that agreement, we are now in need of a new one. What is being proposed to you today are the terms for that new agreement, and they are the result of staff meeting with the 2018-19 Resident Golf Program Contract Subcommittee consisting of council members Hobart and Wile, and representatives from the Weston discussing the terms of that agreement. If we could please pull up the slideshow, Josh? Thank you. So on the screen above you and before you, you'll see the proposed terms of that agreement. It would be a three-year term. The annual membership would remain at the current $89 for the term of the agreement. It would include one complimentary round of golf, two complimentary golf clinics and range sessions, 20% discounts on golf merchandise, food and beverage, and room rates at the Weston, advanced tee time bookings for four, seven, and 10 days, and a maximum 5% annual increase in rates for the term of that agreement. What's not shown on here but being proposed as well are separate fees for weekend play versus weekday play. The representatives from the Weston have indicated that the addition of separate weekend rates is necessary due to the impact of the program on prime weekend play and the increased cost of doing business. You can see on the next slide, which is a copy of the rate schedule, and it's included in your agenda packets as an attachment to the staff report, the four, seven, and 10-day booking windows. The four-day booking window has always been available to Rancho Mirage resident members. The seven and 10-day booking windows are being added to the program if approved. For an additional fee, members can book at seven or 10 days out. Non-members would only have a maximum three-day booking window, as you can see highlighted in yellow as well. The difference between rates between a resident member for weekday and weekend play for the standard four-day booking window compared to a non-member rate for weekend and weekend play is highlighted in the green boxes, and you can see that those differences are quite substantial in terms of what a member would pay versus a non-member. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. The Director of Golf at the Weston, Hale Kelly, is in attendance and available for questions as well. Thank you very much.
Sean, I have a question regarding the increase in, in the fees from one year to the next.
Yes.
Shows that we're limited to 5%. How's that fee determined?
It would be based on the established rate schedule, so nothing above 5% from that established rate could be introduced for that next year.
So, I mean, could it be 3% or 2% or?
Absolutely. It would just not be able to exceed a maximum of 5%.
Okay, and how is the five, how is the rate up to 5% determined?
That's based on the Weston, and the Director of Golf can probably answer that better than I can.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yes, would you like to come up?
So as far as...
Do you have your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Hale Kelly. I'm the Director of Golf at the Weston Mission Hills Golf Resort, and thanks for having me this afternoon. The question regarding the, the lift on rate, you know, maximum of 5%, it's essentially dictated by our business levels and business needs. The rate structure for outside play, I can tell you, we're gonna, we're gonna lift that another $5 for non-resident guests as well, starting January 1, as far as the, kind of our starting point of where we're selling golf online and so forth. But the rate structure that we've created will always be, I guess, what you could call our best rate guarantee for Rancho Mirage residents. Nobody will ever get a better rate than Rancho Mirage.
Okay.
Very good.
So again, is the, the 5% based on other rates that you have in the hotel?
Yes, sir. It's, it's based on our transient rates, our group rates, our tournament rates, and, you know, like programs in, in the area. This current rate structure, I don't really, I don't see us going up next year or even the year after that. It's, it's in a good place as far as the growing that piece of business for us, because we don't want to price ourselves out and shrink the number from 936 to anything less. We want to continue to grow this piece of business, you know, for the Weston, and, you know, cater to the residents.
Thank you.
I've got one other feature that we actually added to the program, where residents have the ability now to book online at PlayMissionHills.com. So as folks are signing up for the program, we will assign them their member number, which they'll be able to plug that number into their login, you know, at the, at the applicable area of the website, so they can book their own tee times and they can bypass phone calls to the golf shop.
Okay. Ted, do you have a comment?
Yes, again, I'd like to thank you for the relationship we have with the Weston. It's worked out very well. Councilman Hobart and myself have been involved in the program for many years, and I think it's been extremely advantageous to both the Weston as well as the residents of Rancho Mirage. The program essentially works by proving residency, by bringing into the city or the Weston verification, whether it be a utility bill or something along those lines that identifies them as a resident, and therefore, they qualify. And it has grown significantly. What we have found, as you well know, in the golf industry, is that a number of people over the years find that they're not playing quite as much as they did previously. Instead of playing five days or six days a week, they may play three days a week. And so this program works out much more practically and economically for them to, to join the Rancho Mirage Golf Club program. I think also, it's going to be a great attraction for the new Pulte development. You're dealing with now a, another demographic group, 55-plus, a number of people that are retired, that may not want to be spending five hours out on a golf course and only play two or three days a week. So that's a whole other audience that's going to be introduced to this program, that have the advantage of using the Weston courses, as well as the discounts that are being provided at the Weston, whether it be food and beverage, spa facilities, and so forth. And again, what we're most proud of as far as the city is concerned, it's another amenity for the residents of the 92270 zip code. So again, we thank you. It's a great relationship, and we anticipate that it'll be perpetuated for a number of years.
Thank you very much.
So thank, thank everyone at the Weston for us.
I sure will. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ted, and thank you, Dana, for putting together a good...
Is there somebody, maybe staff, Sean, we're getting near the end of the year, time for people to re-up in the program. What do they have to do? What do our residents have to do to become a member of the program for the coming year and to get these rates?
So the Weston handles all the administration of this program, so they could go directly to the Weston or probably online. Hale, if that's the case, please confirm.
Yeah, so all they have to do is just bring a utility bill, you know, to us?
That's the point I was making. They've got, they have to bring something from the city that shows that they qualify as a resident.
Right. Yes, sir, absolutely. And we keep, we keep a copy of that in, in a binder of sorts with their application and whatnot to make sure...
And you inform the city whenever the city asks.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's very easy. Residents can just come in any point at City Hall and be helped at the front counter, and all we need is proof of residency. So if you have an ID card with your Rancho Mirage address, a utility bill, a lease agreement, really anything that verifies that you're a resident, we certify it, give you the paper, and then you go to the Weston and get your card.
That's the point that I was making, wanted to make, and that is, the resident has to come to City Hall and claim residency, show evidence, and get our approval, which is automatic and doesn't cost them anything. But they've got to go through that process.
Correct. And we don't, we don't allow them to purchase the card without it.
Right.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Could I have a motion, please?
Sure, I'll make a motion that the city council approve the terms of the Resident Golf Club Program operating agreement, and the Weston Mission Hills Resort and Spa, Weston, and authorize the city manager to execute the new agreement based on the terms presented in this staff report.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, but I neglected to ask the audience if anybody had a comment on this item. Is there anybody in the audience that has a question, comment? Okay, thank you very much. There is a motion and a second. Would you please vote?
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, and that was the last item on the action calendar. We'll now move into closed session, and Steve Quintanilla will read those items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council is now going to recess in a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 regarding three potential initiation of litigation items and two potential significant exposure to litigation items. The facts and circumstances that might result in litigation against the city for these two potential cases are not yet known to the potential plaintiffs, which is the reason why I'm not stating the facts and circumstances that I believe expose the city to litigation. The council will also confer with the city attorney regarding the pending case of Veronica Juarez versus the city of Rancho Mirage, and the case known as New Singular Wireless DBA AT&amp;T Mobility versus the city of Rancho Mirage. The council will also confer with the labor negotiator, the city manager, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 regarding the Rancho Mirage Employees Association.
Thank you, Steve. And with that, we'll recess to closed session.